Susan Walkie.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Kip Ward.
Here.
Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Indiana Hinton.
Here. All I see is staff and media. So I'll respond with the comments from citizens present. Minutes of meeting of March 13th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March 13th, 2017. All the -- discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, hearing none, motion passed. Thank you. Facade improvement loan, U R F I 2016-05. Ms. Robertson?
Good evening. So this is being brought before you actually at the request of the applicant. This is a loan, a facade improvement loan for $59,000 that you all approved last September. And the applicant has not been able to use the funds because there wasn't a full understanding of how the program worked. And for this particular loan, the property owner is going to be doing the work themselves. And we've checked with the building official, and that's all legal. We, in this case, would only pay for materials. We would not pay for labor. And of course, all work would need to be permitted. You know, it would be treated just like any other work where, you know, electrical and all those other things that do need permits would have to -- that would have to be the case for this situation as well. However, they are wanting to know if the agency would be willing to issue money upfront. And typically, the way our program works, we reimburse contractor receipts and invoices as the work is satisfactorily completed. In this case, it's a request to issue some funds upfront so that the property owner can make materials purchases and then do the work and submit those receipts for reimbursement for the second issue of the funds. So it's a little bit outside of how we have run this program, which the facade improvement program has been around since 1999. And so this is kind of an unusual request, but it is one that the applicant is asking that I make for them, to you to consider. I have some supplemental materials here that came from our outside loan officer, Jim Templin. He's worked with us for a number of years, and he provides some information for you to consider in making this decision, some risks or benefits. And I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any at all, as is the city attorney, if he's willing to respond to your questions.
Mr. Appicello, did you have comments?
Just, I would never recommend to you to make an exception for any one applicant. I think changing the program, provided your staff and legal counsel agree that we can set up sufficient safeguards, like, you know, financial security instruments to protect the U R A, the agency. But I would never recommend making changes for one applicant one through the process. I would always look at making a program change based upon an evaluation of what's in the best interest of the agency. Again, financial security is something you're going to want to make sure you have, some kind of security instrument, pledge assignment, mortgage trustee, something on the property. But again, I think that's a program-level decision, not an individual loan decision.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Williams.
So I guess I'd have to ask Mr. Appicello, then, who brings that to us? Who do we say bring us that change so that we can vote on it later?
Well, I think this program's been in place since 99, and if you see through your administration of it a need to maybe be more flexible or change things, maybe not to be as flexible, then you would ask your staff to draft that change to the program, and you would all vote on it, decide if you wanted to make that kind of a change.
I would be in favor of that, but I'm not speaking for the mission.
I would be in favor of changing it also because I'd hate to say, set precedence without having guidelines for specific future loan opportunities.
Madam Chair. Have we ever had anyone in the past do their own work?
No.
Not to speak of when they get paid and all that, but just do their own work.
No, we have not. It's all been paying general contractors to do the work.
Madam Chair. If you can, again, state the nug, the base of this request, is that, one more time, please?
Sure. So this is a facade improvement loan that was approved in September. And usually what we do is, when the work is completed, we get, not we, but our outside loan officer that administers the funds, would receive an invoice from a contractor and then reimburse that or pay that invoice after checking that the work had been completed. And in this case, the applicant is doing the work themselves and does not have the cash upfront to purchase the materials and is requesting that it be sort of more like a line of credit rather than a construction loan. And so that is, that is up to the agency to decide if they want to administer these funds outside of how we normally would do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Madam Chair. So, but this loan is for, how much again?
Fifty-nine thousand.
Fifty-nine. And it's, you stop me if I'm saying things out of turn here. There's a lien against the building.
There would be.
There would be a lien, and it's significant, we're significantly more than that loan.
Yes.
So the, we're in a good position.
Yes.
And first position.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So the risk is fairly low for default.
Yes, and that's typically what we do. We look for a little, I mean, there's always risk with economic development and with doing loan programs, you're lending money, so there's always a risk there. But in order to offer the program to the public and make it available to improve buildings, you know, it's part of the risk that goes with trying to make those improvements in the community. So, you know, most often, we are in first position, and, you know, the information that Jim Templin provides to us, and which then goes to the loan committee and ultimately the agency for approval, that information is, you know, it talks about loan-to-value ratios and if there is enough equity to assure repayment. And, you know, you're provided with as much information as the loan officer has about making the loan available. So in this case, you all had gone through that and approved it, but approved it under how we would normally distribute the funds. And so that's why it's just a --
I'm in favor of having just a little more flexibility because we really, so much like compliance, we also want these improvements. And we, I think, anything we can do to help people get these improvements going in our city is valuable. And again, I think the loan, the risk is minimal at best, so I'm completely comfortable doing this. But then, sensitive to what Mr. Appicello said is perhaps we need to build that into our program here, so it's permanent. Madam Chair. Is there a timeline that this needs to be done by for the applicant?
Yeah, so I would, I would hope to be able to make some recommendations to changing the program if that's what you all are wanting to do, and then bring it back at the next meeting, because it has been since September that this has been approved and the person has been ready to go on their improvements, probably, you know, when the weather is better. So they'll, they'll want to be doing the improvements sooner than later. So that would be my timeline, if that is the direction you would like to go in.
Madam Chair. Yes, I'm not understanding why we have to go to the extent of a whole program change in the time that that takes versus making an exception. I thought we were entertaining an exception for this specific request, is one thing. The other, I'm, I always look for signals. This loan was approved in September. March, we're hearing that, gee, I didn't fully understand the program. September, October, maybe November are good months to be doing things. Not March, not April. So I'm a little concerned there that our borrower is not well-informed and not going to be well-informed through the process. I don't even know who it is. But there's a signal there. The other is you're never going to be ahead. If he doesn't have money now to buy the material, and if he's not going to be floated by the supplier, then we're always going to be advancing funds in addition, you know, in advance of the material. He's never going to make it up if we're not paying for wages and we're not, if all we're doing is advancing for material. So we're always going to give him a check and hope that he goes buys the material, puts it in place. So you're only going to be one turnout, but it's still, I don't disagree with the mayor at all that, you know, we're well secured. That's not the issue. I'm just wondering if this is going to be more trouble than it's worth, because we're not charging a fee to manage to this extent. We rely on contractor. So, and I'm hoping that, at this point, all we're hearing is one request, one exception to our policy.
Madam Chair, if I could, is it okay to discuss what we discussed in our meeting?
Absolutely, yeah. The loan committee did meet, and yes, you're welcome.
Yeah, because just in case it wasn't clear, what we, the three of us here, discussed was the parceling out of the money, saying, and I believe we said thirds. So the one-third, make sure that the work's done, completed, and to permit, to code, and all that before any more funds are dispersed. So we're limiting our liability, we're making sure the work's proceeding as requested, and then, but we'll get another dime until each one of those benchmarks is met. Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's what we talked about. And I did run that by our loan officer, and he said that he was able to meet that sort of a disbursement arrangement. So he's, he's, he's able to do that. He did also, just so you're aware, you know, part of the reason why the applicant is doing the work themselves is because they're trying to really be cost-efficient. And I think it's, the, Jim Templin did mention that somewhere in here, that, that he's been concerned about the actual or estimated cost and the plan for completion. And I did speak with the applicant, and it sounded as though, you know, if the applicant had requested bids from a contractor, that it would have been likely double rather than just materials. So this is just information I'm providing about the situation, and yes, I mean, we would minimize risk by issuing a third upfront. However, there is a little less ability to make sure that the work is being done. If it's not done satisfactorily, then what do you do with a third of a roof, for example? Or, you know, so there are pros and cons, and I think that, you know, again, I'm happy to talk more or answer more questions, or if there are not questions that you have enough information with, I'm happy to go back to the loan officer to get more information. But that's, that's kind of where we are.
Madam Chair. I'm comfortable voting for it tonight, and I was just trying to be sensitive to the, our city attorney's concerns about these things, and I will, I'm easy with what Counselor Anderson was saying, just to, you know, we make the exception, and I think we've built enough safeguards into it that I'm comfortable voting for it tonight.
Ms. Hinton. I'm just curious, do you know any reason why there was such a long span of time between his application and coming back again? I mean, is there a legitimate reason? You don't have to say what it is, but.
Yeah. I would say that our loan officer, Jim Templin, had some personal issues, and I think that there was not as fast a response time, and the applicant was communicating with Jim Templin, and it was a while before I had heard that there was a misunderstanding. So it was kind of a compilation of communication lapses, holidays, and then I think also the applicant assuming that he would not be doing the work in the middle of winter. So, but now, now the applicant is ready to go, which is why, you know, it got brought up. It was a couple of months ago that the applicant inquired about it, and so, yeah.
So what are our safeguards in this first third of the amount of money? I mean, what, are there inspections that happen, or is there some way that we know that?
Yes.
This is actually getting done?
Yes. We, Jim Templin would be responsible for doing any inspections that are for permitted, not permitted work. For permitted work, it would run through the regular inspection process. But the assurance would be, as the mayor mentioned, we would not issue any funds until we had a lien on the property, so that would be our assurance. And that's the case for most of these loans with the property owner, where if there's some default or the work isn't done and they don't pay, then we end up with the property, which we would not really want to end up with the property, but that is the public's protection for loaning the money.
And is there a further insurance that Mr. Templin can let you know if he has some personal issue that can't keep him, that keeps him from his work?
We would be following this very closely.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ward.
I know we got a lot of different, everyone has their own idea what blight is. But I would ask you, is this property visually challenged?
I would say that for all of our loan applicants, they are looking to do some kind of improvement that would make the curb appeal improved.
And would these be improvements that we, you could see from the street?
Yes.
So sometimes I would assume that when you're, when you have your eye on a piece of property, you know, you have the challenge of the property itself, and you have the challenge of the owner, you know, and trying to work to put it together to resolve or to solve that problem. I would just think that maybe we have a unique opportunity here by bending things a little that we can maybe get, change that designation of that visually challenged piece of property. I say we should go for it. Thanks.
Allison, is the lien on the property, is that already expected, or is this something that would be expected?
That is normally what happens with our loans, so this would, this would work the same in that way. We would have a lien on the property before any funds were issued.
And that's standard?
Yes.
Procedure?
Yes.
Madam Chair. Last question. Have we, the borrower has the ability to handle the construction? He has the skill set, verified skill set, more than just a hammer and a dog?
Yeah, so we don't really have a way of finding out that information.
Madam Chair. Do you have to be a contractor to do work on your building?
If it's your building, you do not have to be a contractor. You have the right, or the building official, to do your own work on your own building. For work that is not, I mean, you, like electrical, you would have to still have a licensed certified electrician, right?
Non-functioning.
Right.
Cosmetic purposes.
But like, painting, for example, if you wanted to, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
What would the motion be, then? Are we motioning for the entire amount to be dispersed as you, I'm not sure how we're supposed to tell you how to proceed?
Well, I think there are a couple of options. You can, you can recommend that we, that we issue up to a third upfront, assuming a lien is in place, and that we are first position on the property, and then issue a second dispersment after we've received satisfactory receipts from stores for material purchases. We could issue a second third, and then do the same thing for the final third. And that is assuming that all work is completed, you know, to code or properly, that, that that's how that would happen. Or if you would rather have staff bring back at the next meeting an alteration to the program to allow this to be an alternative to how funds are dispersed, that's another option.
I would make the motion to issue up to one-third of the amount requested with us in the first position, issuing their, is it an issue lien?
Issue lien.
Issue a lien.
Record.
Record, yeah, I knew there was another word. Record a lien, and then a dispersment of funds on completion, satisfactory completion of the job. How's that? Sloppy motion. One second.
I'm happy to second it for discussion to see what I'm missing here.
I would like to add that not only receipts received for purchases, but that the work done and inspected prior to dispersal of the second installment. I would second the motion if it included that.
And my motion to include those.
Further discussion?
Yes.
When, when you go to get a lien on the property, does that take a while to record? No? It's pretty immediate? Okay. That's what I asked.
Can we file a lien for the full amount of the loan, even though we just dispersed part of it?
Yes.
So we would have a lien in place for the entire amount of the loan?
We wouldn't want to have to go through the transaction at each dispersment.
Right. And then the materials would be purchased and the work done and inspected prior to dispersal of the next installment?
Mm-hmm.
And as long as we're first position on that lien, I feel we're secure. Any further discussion?
So, so if it's for $59,000, and it's, how much work are you going to require for the third of the money? So how do you value what's done according to what's been given? If I buy a third of, you know, $20,000 with the material, I'm like, yeah, I got it, and I need some more money to do something else. I mean, where do you gauge what's been done with, what, you're going to make him or her buy specific things with the money to be able to prove this much work has been done with what? I mean, it just seems very loose.
Yeah, this is new territory. I think that we would base, I mean, we, the only receipts we're requesting, because he would not be paid for labor. He'd be paid on materials. That's the only thing that we really have as verification for more dispersment. So you're right. You know, he would have to make a judgment call about making sure that the materials he's purchasing would be able to be used on whatever project, and then that would have to be verified in the field. And then he could request to purchase, have money to purchase more materials, but you're right.
It would seem like $20,000 could tear down the whole front of a building and rebuild it. I mean, that's a significant amount of material with no labor costs. So I have my reservation. Madam Chair.
My only point I think left would be that as we move forward and get more aggressive regarding visually challenged buildings, we're going to have to get flexible, because there's a lot of people that have problem properties that got there different ways. And we're going to have to, have to have the ability to flex, you know, to flex with the wind rather than standing stern and missing opportunities.
Madam Chair, just, I'm going to echo that as a business owner. It's tough to come up with some money, you know, for $20,000 for materials. It's not easy, especially what you've seen so many business owners weather this last year. I mean, it's been tough. And so I have to say, I have a certain bias towards a business owner saying, hey, I don't have it, but this person has been in the business how long? How long have they been a part of our community, you know?
I know it's been a long time, but I don't know.
A decade?
Probably.
Yeah, so this isn't someone who's just going to walk away. I mean, as a loan officer, I'd say, yeah, it's a pretty good bet. I like my odds. And, but again, I'm sensitive to Counselor Ryan's, or Commissioner Ryan's, are we commissioners here? What are we? Board member?
Members.
Member.
See members.
Riley. To his concerns, but I just want to say again, from my standpoint, I think it's a, I think it's a good bet, and to what Kip was saying, it's, it needs to be done. We need to start getting this town a good facelift.
So the applicant owns the building?
Yes.
And it is a current lit property? Is it currently in use?
Yes.
And it's a business?
Yes.
Jesus is like, what's my line?
Twenty dollars down the road.
Madam Chair. So if we say no, what other options does this person have as far as toolbox things that the city can provide in order to do the things that they need to have done? So no, it's not a facade improvement loan. So we say, okay, a facade improvement loan is not applicable to you. What other things do we have in place to be able to help this individual?
Yeah, none of our loans operate as a line of credit. So we would not be able to help this property owner unless they were, unless they had some kind of credit ability on their own, like a credit card that had a high limit. And, and that is an option in this case, if they wanted to do that. There was some apprehension with interest rates. Obviously, we have a very market-competitive 0% interest rate, which is wonderful.
But I mean, if we're saying, we'll pay it back if, you know, if you get the, this, it will be paid back when the work is done, right? I mean, that's.
Right.
And then they could cancel that card. I mean, so it's an, it's an option.
It is an option.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor that we seconded? I seconded. I think Mr. Ward did previously.
Okay.
Does he second it with your changes?
You seconded with the changes.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
No.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Hoagland?
No.
Motion carries. It was suggested that we change our criteria for our loans. We have made an exception and allowed this one. Just there, feeling among the agency members that maybe we should look at our.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to look at the guidelines for loans in the future.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
Because there might be more that come up.
I missed the motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion to consider altering our guidelines for future loans.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? I would just like to say that even though this is an exception, I like the scrutiny this provides as an exception to have to come to the agency because not, because it's different. It's, it rises to, I think, a different level than just, than just written guidelines. I think we need a discussion about it. I'd feel much more comfortable in the future if something like this comes up, if we have the opportunity, as we do now, to see if it, you know, if that really is a good bet or not for the agency's money, so.
Madam Chair.
I wouldn't support it.
The thing I think to remember is, it's gone through you, through you and your department. It's gone through an independent banker and their scrutiny. It then goes through a loan committee discussion before it even gets to this agency. So this is, for what we spend our money on, this is one of those thoroughly vetted discussions we have about spending money, so I'm fairly comfortable with the procedure, but I'm always willing to, I would say yes to changing it.
Well, I.
Madam Chair, I would disagree that.
Well, Madam Chair, I would disagree that it's not a well-vetted process. We don't know who the borrower. I haven't seen any credit. I haven't seen any expertise. So I appreciate all that's been done, but I'm not sure even the loan committee, you know, knows all the detail behind the process. So we have really, one, our paid lender vets it. And as I read the material, it's outside their realm of operation as well. So I'm with Ms. Hinton. I like the discussion opportunities. I don't know that I'm, after one request, after so many years, and this is in a town known to be bashful about requests. If staff told me that they've got five others' individuals, that if we could break from our norm, I'd be much more enthusiastic of making a policy change versus dealing with an exception. I'm comfortable with dealing with the exception.
But don't you think if we laid out the guidelines and procedures, other people would see that there are alternative options and then be able to use them rather than guessing or wondering or even being hesitant to apply because they might be between the cracks?
Always, there's always that opportunity.
I think our guidelines at this point assume that you're going to hire a contractor. And I think we should be flexible enough that that's not a requirement.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's why we've just done that with an exception. Though I'd sure be comfortable with a little more knowledge.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second to bring back in the future our loan guidelines. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Aye.
Let's do a roll call.
Will I be the deciding vote?
Yep.
I'm going to vote. I'd like to see this come back to one of our workshops. And so, and I think it would be helpful to have Richard help us on this. And so I'm going to vote with Judy Caspers. Aye.
I think we have four.
We need to do a roll call so I can get the names.
If I can, Madam Chair, that wasn't part of the motion. So unless you're, the motion wasn't a work session.
Yeah.
So nice of you to change the motion, but that wasn't it.
It was vague, but when it would come back.
I'll go ahead and vote aye anyway.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Hoogland?
No.
Hinton?
No.
It's four, three. Thank you. Motion carries.
All right. Next item on the agenda is project prioritization. Does anyone want to go first? Sure. Let's start at this one. Now, I don't know the numbers. The, I just have two. And the first one is the undergrounding at D-Lake. And the second is to put the remainder in the toolbox.
Madam Chair, I'll throw my two cents in. I do not want to see it used for the undergrounding. And I just, my priority beyond the toolbox is simply the improvement and repair of the dock at TAFs.
Madam Chair?
Hoogland?
I also do not support the undergrounding at D-River. I feel like the most important thing is the sewage that we're currently dumping onto the ocean. And that is a big priority since it's a way to, and I understand that's, I believe that the term is I&amp;I is the reason for that. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone. But if we can, if there has been surveys done to address the highest I&amp;I percentage areas within the urban renewals agency's district, to remedy those, whether it be digging them up, burst in place, or cured in place piping. I think the teen center and the homelessness center have much more priority over undergrounding. And I also agree that increasing the toolbox would benefit the businesses in town.
Madam Chair? Yes, Casper?
I also am not supportive of the undergrounding. I also am concerned about our sewage waste system. And workforce housing is an urgent need that we need to address. And there are things that could be dealt with that our community would benefit from, even childcare, internet use, parks. And a teen center is desperately needed.
I'd also like to state workforce housing as well. I did forget to say that.
My concern with some of these comments is these are urban renewal funds that need to be used in the urban renewal area. That's not all of our town. How much of the urban renewal area is residential?
It's not the majority.
Mr. Anderson, do you have priorities?
No, I do. I would go forward looking at our sheet from our shopping list to pick from. I would say we stay on budget. Items six through 12, which have been budgeted for this fiscal year, that we complete those with the exception of number nine and number 10. And if you recall, that's the glass foundry and the D-Lake school capital. We've kind of agreed to pull those out since we're moving those properties to city-owned and could take care of those repairs there. So I'd like to see those projects get completed. And then add to that number 14, which is the undergrounding of the D-Wayside area. And number 13, which is the Cutler-Jettie realign. And the rest of the funds of approximately a million plus going to the toolkit.
Mr. Ward?
Got a lift again? I too look at some of these that can be accomplished without urban renewal funds. And maybe urban renewal funds might not be the proper way to go with those. And not that we don't need to address them, but perhaps we can address those out of the general fund rather than urban renewal fund. I'm skeptical of the undergrounding in front of the D-River Wayside. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying that I've got questions and observations. Currently, I think that we have it scheduled for beginning, I think, at Northwest Second Street. And I think it ends at, can anybody help me there? Was it Ebb that it ended at?
Vista.
Was it Ebb? Okay. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is that we have a history of going way over our bids. And if we happen to rely on a total amount, one project going all over its bids would eat all of the possible tools for the toolbox and we would just end up with one thing. So I'm concerned about that. Walking the property, what I noticed was, was that the telephone poles or utility poles were actually set quite a ways back to where the sidewalk is, which left a good 200 or 300 feet of the park that there weren't any lines for. So just looking at it that way. And also going up from there in front of the D-Sands. I drove that, walked that, and I don't see there'd be any visual benefit to removing, spending the money to have the lines taken out and underground in front of D-Sands. On the positive parts, you know, the VCB is going to be doing an information center there. We're going to get new restaurants and it's going to be really nice. And it'd be nice to work with the VCB and the urban renewal work together on a project. So that's about as milquetoast as I can.
Do you have preferences other than that?
No, I really don't. I mean, as I said, the, yeah, I think I've had the microphone enough.
I guess I need to preface my discussion with a potential conflict of interest. This isn't a decision that we're making right now. But my employment depends on toolbox funds that were allocated prior to my being on council. I do support the undergrounding under D-Lake. And I would like to see projects six, seven, eight, 11, 12, 13, and 14 completed as we have committed funds to those projects already. Appreciate everyone's input.
Councilor, Madam Chair? I guess I actually misspoke myself. My first priority is going to be blight and blight removal. And whatever happens in whatever decisions that we make, I would like to be certain that we leave enough resources in our toolbox to be able to aggressively approach issues of blight in this town.
So blight removal would be funds in the toolbox?
Yeah, it would be funds in the toolbox. And we're talking, we're not talking sewer blight or we're not talking pump stations blight. We're talking the type of visual blight that everyone sees every day that they go out and down the street. And that's where my concerns are. I don't want to spend so much on one giant project that it comes time to work on blight and we have no bullets left, so.
Chair? Just because I've been down this road a million times, this conflict of interest, I think you should say whether it's a potential or actual and what exactly the job is. Because I don't know what that is.
I was hired as the downtown manager, which is for Bama, which is funded by a grant from urban renewal. Thank you. And it's an actual once we start talking dollars. Yeah.
Just trying to save his headaches down the road.
Thank you, thank you. All right. And I have asked for an opinion from the Reagan Government Ethics Commission and have not had a response. So that's why I am participating in the discussion, but with that disclosure.
And I didn't mean anything by that, just like I said, I've been down the road.
Right.
So it's a potential conflict because currently you're working under a grant that was issued before and it has nothing to do with the decision you're making now. But if the council votes to put money in the toolbox, there's also no guarantee that it will go to your position. So it still remains potential. So where it might be a problem is after that. But again, I'm not offering an opinion. I'm just trying to figure out if it's actual or potential.
It's when we fund that grant that it would be an actual conflict.
Ethics will tell you exactly.
Thank you. So I see three against undergrounding, three for undergrounding, and one who thinks it has pluses and minuses. How specific do we need to be in our priorities?
Madam Chair, why don't we have Debbie come up and talk to you a little bit about the financing and some of the information she has? I think that will probably answer your question.
Thank you.
You don't have to be exactly spot on and do exactly, but you need to have a, need to have a limited list that gives the person who's going to be lending us money a good feel for what we're going to use the money for. I don't, that's not really maybe a very good answer.
We can definitely have a list that's more expensive than our funds, correct?
Yes, you can. You probably wouldn't want a six-page list, but you can certainly have a list that's more than what you're asking for.
Less than this, but.
Yeah, exactly. So it kind of looks like, you know, we know where, what we're going to be spending the money on. Maybe not exactly, but pretty close. How's that for an answer?
And I think with these comments that we've had today, we do have, we have limited, we have narrowed it down from this long list.
Madam Chair? But aren't some of these things that we mentioned in the toolbox or accessible by the toolbox? Through the toolbox, with the toolbox?
Yes, like the blight, removal of blight.
Or workforce housing.
Workforce housing.
Mm-hmm. So some of those would be, could be addressed through that means.
Through the toolbox, yes. And this might, this might kind of sound familiar. When we were first talking about the bond issuance, we talked about how you all could remove projects from this long shopping list if you wanted to rule them out. So this would be a shorter list of things that you may do, which would be better for the bond sale. It just gives a little more clarity to the process of selling the bond.
So Madam Chair, I guess it begs the question, have you heard enough to make that list for the bond sale? Or do we need to do something more? We could, I believe, with all that you have said, you've identified some very specific projects. What we can do is go back and check with the bond council to see if we listed all of those different items and said, is that a small enough list? And see what they have to say about it. If you're willing, if you're willing not to go beyond the items that were brought up. So for example, the items in which people supported were the undergrounding, the dock repair, the toolbox, sewer projects. homelessness center, workforce housing, which is a part of the toolbox as was mentioned. Items six, seven, eight, six, seven, eight, 11, 12, 13. So those are the items that you have mentioned. So we could take that back to our bond council and see if that is sufficient in order to go forward.
There were a few others that you didn't just mention.
Okay. If I miss something, let me know and I can get those down.
The teen center.
Okay.
Childcare, parks, internet.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I, I have a question. Are they all equal weight? Or, I mean, this is, this is just a rough list then because I don't-
Yeah, for, for example, on the last bond which we did, which was city-backed, whereas we'll be doing urban renewal back to this time. For the last bond, we had maybe 10 to 15, but they were all capital projects and we submitted that list. One of those projects on that list was a pump station, the Salassee Pump Station. And these were all projects that were priority for public works in the city at large. And that was a project that did not move forward. And so, for example, that would have been a list and we just did not choose to do all of those projects on that list for that particular bond.
So we can prioritize later if this list is acceptable to the-
You could.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Some of these could be, if you didn't find appropriate for urban renewal, some of these could go from the general fund, correct?
Yes.
And Madam Chair, one other thing, and going along with what Council Ward said, on some of these, we'll also need to bring back some information to you on whether or not this bond money could cover the full cost or whether or not it would have to be shared because it would serve partially outside the district as well.
I was noticing a flitting of the eyes from, from Maureen. Did you have?
No, I just always question when you talk about spending general fund money, that's all. I don't. It's a, it's a number one response.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, I think we've had good discussion. I appreciate people coming back with a list. And no resolutions? Further agency member comments?
Just Mr. Hoogland?
At the conclusion of the urban renewal agency as it is right now, what likelihood is it that another one will be created encompassing different areas of the city?
That's a great question. Urban renewal is a tool that can be used as an economic development tool. And cities are allowed, within reason of certain assessed values, to create more than one district at a time. So I think in our future conversations that we'll be having on economic development, that is something that we can talk about more.
From staff's standpoint, I think it's very likely. But ultimately, it'll become a policy question and a discussion with the other taxing entities.
Awesome, thanks.
Good question, thank you. And meetings adjourned?
Take five, guys.
We have seven. It's a long walk.
Take seven. There's a restroom right out here. I see, okay. Take seven then. We'll make it 6:05. Are mics still on then, Ron?
You're okay with this?
Yes, yes, right, yeah.